Seven o'clock. I'll call this meeting to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and the invocation following.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear God, please bless our elected officials. Grant them the wisdom to know and the courage to do what is right for all citizens. Amen.
Amen. Roll call, please.
Allen?
Here.
LaFleur?
Here.
Ms. Ravitch?
Here.
Reindell?
Here.
Ricks?
Here.
Schultz?
Here.
One?
Here.
Good to see everybody here tonight. We move on to approval of the minutes of the City Council meeting of August 7th. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Support.
What's been made and supported, is there any discussion? Be in not all in favor, the motion is signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion is approved. We move on to audience comments on any non-agenda items. Mr. City Manager, do you have a statement you'd like to make?
I do. I'd like to make a statement regarding the events that occurred last week. More than one year ago, the Macomb County Prosecutor's Office charged Chief Costello with wrongfully using the Lane system. Upon being informed of the charge, I placed the chief on administrative leave while I conducted a thorough investigation of the circumstances. During this time, Sergeant Kazanowski was made acting chief, and there was no interruption of the services and safety provided by the Richmond Police Department. Upon concluding my investigation, which included a review of the Macomb County Sheriff's file, I determined that the act of which Chief Costello was accused was not caused to terminate him at that time. The charge defense did not affect the operation of the police department, nor did it impair Chief Costello's ability to administer the department. As a result, I reinstated Chief Costello pending the outcome of the charge against him, an action that was unanimously approved by the Richmond City Council. During the entire process, Chief Costello has been entitled to the presumption of innocence and the right to due process of the law. The city has been kept apprised of the status of the case as it has progressed through the court system. During this time, Chief Costello has been performing at a high level, as is expected of any of our city department directors. He has continued to move the Richmond Police Department forward in a professional manner. The chief has kept me up to date on the progress of the court proceedings and outlined the plea bargain that was being worked on with the prosecutor and the knowledge of the judge involved. On Thursday, August 17th, I was informed that the charge against the chief was resolved by a plea bargain in the District Court in New Baltimore. In the implementation of the plea bargain, the judge imposed a condition, five days in jail, that no one involved, Chief Costello, his lawyer, the assistant prosecutor handling the case, or the judge had discussed. Upon being informed by Chief Costello of the unexpected change with the outcome at court, I placed him on administrative leave and asked the sergeant to serve as acting chief. Just hours later, at the request of Chief Costello's attorney and the assistant prosecutor involved, the judge who had imposed the unexpected sentence allowed Chief Costello to withdraw his plea and set aside the sentence he had imposed. The judge then recused himself from any further proceedings in the case. Regarding Chief Costello's employment, the city is in the same position it was a year ago when I reinstated him to active duty. None of the facts have changed regarding the chief's conduct, and the rationale for reinstating Chief Costello a year ago still applies. Chief Costello has the right to the presumption of innocence and all his other constitutional and statutory rights. I will continue to monitor the status of the case. Chief Costello has resumed his responsibilities as chief of police as of 8:00 a.m. this morning, pending the outcome of the charge against him. I will continue to act in the best interest of the city as facts and circumstances are presented and inform the council and the public as warranted.
Thank you. The council concurs with us unanimously. The statement that the city manager has brought forth tonight, and we stand by our city manager's decision to bring the chief back on. He's done a great job.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other audience comments on any non-agenda items? We will move on. Mr. City Manager, any change in the agenda?
Adding item number five, which is resolution recognizing youth football, Richmond Youth Football, as a nonprofit operating within the city of Richmond.
Okay. City Council, any change? Motion to accept the amended agenda would be in order?
I'll make the motion.
Support.
What's been made and supported, any discussion? Be in not all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. We move on to consent agenda, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Support.
What's been made and supported, there's no discussion on the motion, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. We move on to items for consideration, the first one being consideration of special event request, mobile food vendor for Backyard Living. Mr. City Manager?
City Council is scheduled to consider a special event request for a mobile food vendor from Backyard Living Company to have a mobile food vendor batter up onsite on Sunday, September 10th, from 11:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. in the Backyard Living parking lot at 68224 Main Street. The mobile food vendor would offer chicken and waffles. Over the years, there have been many discussions on the mobile food vendor applications, and in 2021, we did have a mobile food vendor application brought to us on behalf of some food vendors for Parade Day. Again, that Sunday is the day of the grand parade for the Richmond Good Old Days Festival. In 2021, the City Council denied the request based on the fact that the festival enters into a lot of food contracts for the sale of food throughout the festival. Those include nonprofits operating within the city of Richmond. And so, based on that and the fact that historically the festival and the city have told local businesses and restaurants that whatever you do is a normal course of your business. If you're a restaurant, yes, you can sell food out on Parade Day. If you're an insurance agent, you really shouldn't bring in a mobile food vendor to or sell food in front of your business that day. So, based on that past practice and the concerns that were raised by others in 2021, council did deny that request. We have had listed two motions for you, should council decide which way to go.
Thank you. Would you like to speak to the council on this issue, please?
Absolutely. Thank you. Good evening. My name's Neil Bryan with Backyard Living Company. And yeah, you know, this isn't something where it's a make or break for us. I had my office reach out and they said, and actually, like the city manager just said that people rejected in the past. We just figured, you know, we were open last year and we did get some traffic into our business. There really weren't many options. There were some people selling some hot dogs and some waters, and then Tavoli's Fabio's across the street. Actually, went over there to talk to Fabio. He goes, Neil, don't worry about it, you know? He goes, my, you know, my father and his brother are going to be selling Italian sausages, you know? So, anyway, my wife's friend thought this place was really cool. She always tried to find them at the chickens and waffles. And yeah, so I just wanted to throw it out to you folks and see what you had to say. And this is my daughter Reese Bryan, and I did not put her up to this. She came in my office tonight with my wife, and then she had a couple words to say. Say hello, Reese.
Hi.
Hello.
And so, I'm really proud of her that she had the courage to come tonight, but again, I did not put this out. She showed up at my office and she just drew this stuff up, and we're going to be happy either way, right? Because no matter what, she can have a lemonade stand. Okay? So, okay. Go ahead, baby. You can do it. Here, I'll help you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the City Council. My name is Reese Bryan, and I am speaking on behalf of Backyard Living Co. The reason why I'm here today is to request approval for allowing us to set up a food truck in our parking lot for the Good Old Days Parade. I would like to tell you some reasons why you should let us set up a food truck in the parking lot.
One reason?
One reason you should let us set up a food truck is because there are not a lot of restaurants near us. Also, we have talked to the owner of Tavoli's, and he was okay with the idea of us having a food truck in the parking lot. Another reason you should let us have a food truck in our parking lot is to help us attract visitors to our lemonade stand so we can afford to open our own business one day. The last reason you should let us have a food truck in our parking lot is to support Backyard Living Co.'s business. This shows you should let us have a food truck in our parking lot. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Anything to add to that?
Nope. That's great job.
Thank you. Is there a motion for discussion?
I'll make a motion to approve the special event request for the mobile food vendor for the Backyard Living Company to have the mobile food vendor batter up in the Backyard Living Company parking lot on Sunday, September 10th, from 11:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m.
Support.
What's been made and supported, discussion?
Yeah, I know we have turned this down the past on the different section of town near restaurants. They do make a point. I was concerned about Tavoli's, and it sounds like they have talked with the owner there. It is in a location where there isn't any restaurants, and it is basically during the parade, the Main Street is shutting down by 12:00, and it won't be reopened until around 4:00 anyway. So, that's the reason I would consider approving that at this time.
I would be on the other side of that conversation, of course. Only, and I don't disagree with the comments and your comments also, but if we allow it here, do we have to allow it everywhere else on Main Street? What I would rather do, it's probably been a long time coming, is to take a look at certain locations on Main Street, such as this one, is a perfect example, and come up with where we would allow. But they're going to have to come through the council because the Good Old Days Committee doesn't want anything to do with licensing out on Main Street or any other street other than the festival grounds. But again, it would have to be isolated spots like Backyard Living has, where the bricks and mortar person has no problems with having what it is that they're requesting there. But I'm going to have to vote against it, but I would be willing to definitely have something that the council can work on in our next workshop or over the winter, whatever it is, so that we can start looking at the possibility of food trucks in certain locations in the community if we want to add to the policy that we have right now. That's where I sit. Anybody else? If anybody would like to speak to this?
Yeah, I just see it as honestly being involved with Good Old Days and City Council. We've discussed this at both entities and at length on these, and I like the idea of dealing with these on a case-by-case basis, and I don't really see the conflict down at that end like we've had in the past in other areas. And there's reasons why we've denied them for that conflict, and not seeing a conflict there. And it's something maybe we can work on for next year, have a more set uniform rules. I appreciate them coming actually to council and going through the proper channels as opposed to of us finding out about this Sunday during the parade. So, I appreciate that very much.
Absolutely. Anybody else?
Yeah, Mr. Mary S., I concur with all the comments that were made. In this case, I did support the motion, and as Rob says, we do it case-by-case basis, and I think this one is different from the ones that were proposed previous years on Good Old Days Weekend, where a business wasn't operating that time, and we're just allowing or wanted to allow a food truck to just be used in their location to sell food. And we also turned down one where it was actually in a residential area that they wanted to open and have a food truck down there, and they, you know, with the guise of saying, well, it would help the people that are lining up for the parade, they'll have someplace that'll go to be close. But it really wasn't in this case, as Neil mentioned, last year, you know, it was open for business on that day, and taking advantage of the parade in a good way, the fact that he's using his business to try to have some sales and show his goods and things like that. And actually, he was one of our big vendors in the Good Old Days for a few years ago, and I think probably realized that he can probably do better, if not as good, by having just keeping it at his location where he's got his full array of goods there. So, that's why I think this one, and I agree, we need to maybe think of something for Good Old Days for that part of town, because there are people that are walking around trying to find a place to get something to drink or something to eat. And I think this is a case-by-case, and I think this is a little bit different, and we have justification for allowing this here, just because it's a local business trying to improve and provide a service and goods to the people that are coming there. Maybe they, you know, they're stopping there and then they can get something to eat. It's kind of like, they're there, why not give them something that they can quickly grab to eat and continue to shop, not only there, but maybe in some of the other businesses that are open too. So, that's kind of my feelings on this one.
Any other comments?
The last thing was just the timing from 11:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. was what, you know, I liked. It wasn't like they're trying to stay open until 10:00 at night and continue on with the business or start 8:00 in the morning, and it's a completely different business than product that is being sold in the area. And so, that's my reasoning behind it.
Okay. Anybody else? Any audience participation on this item? You're going to have to come and state your name and your address.
Want us to sit down?
You can.
Okay.
My name is Hillary Yaman, and I am representing the Richmond Moose Lodge. These are our neighbors. We're at 68230 Grand Trunk Avenue, and I will be out watching the parade that day too. And that would be awesome to have something close by to get a bite to eat. So, I just wanted to support it a little bit.
Thank you. Okay, back to the table. Is there any other discussion? Be in not all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Nay. Motion does pass. Good luck. Hopefully, you have great weather. And thank you for coming to the City Council. Your father should be very proud that you came up here and talked in front of council. Usually, the adults are. Yeah.
Good job.
Item number two is consideration of special event request, Richmond Moose Lodge, Michigan Dressers. Mr. City Manager?
Council is scheduled to consider a special event request from the Richmond Moose Lodge to conduct their annual toy run on Grand Trunk Avenue, on Grand Trunk Avenue between Main and Howard on Sunday, October 1st. You may recall in June, the Moose Lodge was here before with two requests for putting up a tent behind the lodge in the undeveloped area of the Grand Trunk, or I'm sorry, Lane Street right of way. And I think this is in conjunction with the second request there, which was for to have a tent back behind the lodge from, I think, Friday through Sunday. And this would then kind of dovetail into that, which would be their annual toy run. So, from our understanding, we've kind of gone back and forth through emails with what they're requesting, but I think I tried to summarize it as best I know, which is the tent behind will be there kind of all weekend. Sunday is still the day of the toy run.
Sunday is the day of the toy run. We'll set the tent up previous to that, maybe a day or two before that, what, you know, what time we all can get together and try to get it put up. We're going to have, we want to have it set up no later than Saturday, obviously. That's the plan, then we'll tear it down on Monday, you know, or that night. You know, we try to get it all done and over with so we don't have to go back, but sometimes if it happens to rain or something like that, you don't want to tear the tent down while it's wet. And blocking off Howard Street or Railroad Street from M-19 to Howard, as we did in the past, and we've asked for.
So, pretty much what you've done in the past is what we want to do again?
Correct. Same process. Same thing.
Yeah. Okay. Very good. Did you have anything that you wanted to add to this?
Just that, pardon? I didn't, oh, yes, the sign. In the past, we asked about putting a banner sign up out by the road, and I forgot how long?
We just, I think in the past, we did it, yeah, I'm sorry, looking at there.
There's a date in here.
September 15th.
Yeah.
Two weeks before?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we just assumed that you were asking for the same thing, so I did put the motion in here.
Okay, okay. I didn't know that that was in there, so Hillary put the email out to you people, and so I didn't know exactly what she had put in there.
We tried to anticipate based on previous years, not based on letter of.
I appreciate that. I can appreciate that. But there is one other question I got, being that the last person that was in here with the vendor and all that. Last year, I didn't know we had to ask any kind of permissions for that kind of thing. Last year for the toy run on the parade day, the club was giving away hot dogs and waters for donation out by the road. I didn't know that we even had to ask to do something like that. We weren't charging them. If they wanted one, we'd give it to them. If they wanted to make a donation for the toy run, the money went toward the child and the toys for the toy run. That's what we were doing with it. So, that's something that I guess kind of threw me a curve here, and I had, you know...
That may be something that you want to contact the city manager on and discuss that. It's a little different than a food vendor license, probably.
Right, right. It's more like, more akin to a church. A lot of times, the churches on Parade Day give away food or have a bake sale or something. I would say that the Moose Lodge, and again, I can confer with council once I've talked to Moose, but I think that's more in line with what churches often do in their parking lots versus truly bringing in the mobile food vendor.
Right, yeah, then we're just pop up a tent, you know, we put flyers out and stuff, and we actually walk down the street, pass out flyers for the toy run and stuff too. So...
Yeah. Very good. Okay. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve the special event request from the Richmond Moose Lodge to conduct the charity fundraiser barbecue, including the placement of a tent partially into the Lane Street right of way from 10:00 a.m. Saturday, September 30th, till 10:00 a.m. Monday, October 2nd.
Support.
What's been made and supported, is there any discussion on this? Any audience participation on this? Be in not all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. We have a second motion for the 36th Annual Toy Run, Toy Run, I'm sorry. Is there a motion for the Toy Run?
I make a motion to approve the special event request from the Richmond Moose Lodge and Michigan Dressers Motorcycle Club to conduct their 36th Annual Toy Run for Kids, including the closure of Grand Trunk Avenue from 9:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. on Sunday, October 1st, 2023, and the use of Grand Trunk from the Moose Lodge to Shepherd's for the reception following.
Support.
What's been made and supported, any discussion on this item? Hope you have good weather.
Thank you.
All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. We have a third one for the banner request.
I make a motion to approve the banner request for a small banner promoting the Richmond Moose Lodge and Michigan Dressers Motorcycle Club's 36th Annual Toy Run for Kids to be placed in the grass area near Grand Trunk and M-19, beginning on Friday, September 15th, 2023.
Support.
What's been made and double supported. Any discussion on this item? Be in not all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Thank you and good luck.
Thank you all. Thank you.
Item number three is consideration approving Resolution 2023-11, approving the SMART Fiscal Year 2024 Municipal and Community Credit Contracts. Thank you, Jeff. There's a mouthful there. Mr. City Manager?
Council is scheduled to consider adopting Resolution Number 2023-11, which approves the SMART Municipal Credit and Community Credit Contracts for Fiscal Year 2024, and Richmond Lennox EMS Chief Jeff White is here to answer any of your questions.
Sir?
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'll try to be very, very brief tonight, but there is a couple things that I want to bring to council's attention. In 2021-22, coming out of the pandemic, we transported 1,726 people here in the city of Richmond. Last year in 2022-23, as we are really completely out of the pandemic, that number has risen to 2,100, so about 375 additional riders here just within the city alone. This year's municipal and community credit contract amount is $19,561 combined between the municipal and community credits. Last year's was $18,891. SMART gave us a whopping $650 increase, three and a half percent, in a year where we've had two years in a row of nearly double-digit inflation to deal with. This year, we received the unfortunate news that apparently municipal liability carriers specifically, because we've talked to five different ones, have decided that community transit is a high risk. So, our liability insurance increased beginning September 1st from $70,000 last year to $181,000 this year. What I'm telling you is we're simply in an unsustainable situation. We will continue to use the money the SMART provides to the city to the best of our ability to continue providing the service that our community's become accustomed to. We've added services, airport service, same-day service, and, you know, when we talk about Good Old Days, all the work that we do that weekend for the festival. But absent our communities, and I'm going to be saying this to everybody, you get to hear it the first time tonight, I've got 11 communities that I have to say this to. Absent your communities, you as the elected leaders, speaking to, you know, the county executive's office, to the county commissioner's, you know, office, because those are the folks that have the voting power at SMART, each county has representatives on the SMART board, and absent you all saying to them, we have to do something different, we'll have to eventually come to you and say, we still need the municipal community credit dollars, but we're going to be providing less service for it, because simply the dollars just don't add up. And so, I say this, say this year, I think we're going to be fine, but, you know, if we continue down this road with these kinds of increases in our cost and no increase coming from the millage, the one mill that you all pay, you know, there will be problems going forward. So, with that, I'm asking council to consider approval of those dollars for this year, and like I say, when you do have the ear of your elected officials at the next level up of government, at the county level, I would ask you just say the same thing I'm saying to them, which is what we're doing right now is unsustainable. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion to adopt Resolution 2023-11, which approves the SMART Municipal Credit and Community Credit Contract for Fiscal Year 2024, and agree to transfer the amount of $5,501 in the municipal credits and $14,060 into community credits to Richmond Lennox EMS and payment for their community transit service.
Support.
What's been made and supported, any discussion on this? That's very sad to hear. This is such an important service that we offer the community. And evidently, one thing maybe good about COVID was people found out who you are and what you do, and your ridership all of a sudden went through the roof by the sounds of it. So, you would think that more monies would be allocated accordingly, just like if you have more paved road miles, you get more money because of those paved roads. If you have more people using the SMART, you would think that we would get more money to make sure that that's happening. That's what transportation by the government's all about, I would think. So, they put you in a pretty rough spot there. So, I know I, for one, will be contacting our representative on the county and asking know I for one will be contacting our representative on the county and, and asking what can we do about this before next year. Cause uh, as you well know, this was an outstanding service that at one time we had none. And it's been developed into what you've made it today. And it's, it's an outstanding resource for our people in this community, I believe. Um, no complaints, you know? So uh, we need to see this continue to uh, happen for our, our community and for our county. So anyhow, any other comments? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Thank you, Jeffrey.
Thank you.
Item number four is consideration of special event request, Richmond High School Band Boosters banner request for annual pumpkin craft extravaganza. Mr. City Manager?
Council is scheduled to consider a request from the Richmond Band Boosters to have a banner across M19 and temporary signage that would advertise and direct people to their 10th Annual Pumpkin Craft and Vendor Sale. Uh, this is a banner uh, that we've approved several times before. And there's also been another motion for kind of a temporary yard signs.
Thank you. Uh, if you'd like to combine that into one motion, council, that would be taken as such. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve the special event application from the Richmond Band Boosters for the cross-road banner and the temporary signage in conjunction with the Pumpkin Craft and Vendor Sale, October 7th and 8th. The banner for September 22nd through the 8th in conjunction with their sale on September, uh, I'm sorry, October 7th and 8th.
Support.
What's been made and supported? Any discussion on this? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. We wish them well. On the amended agenda, number five, the request from the Richmond Youth Football and Cheer Corporation. Mr. City Manager?
Yes, council is scheduled to consider a request from the Richmond Blue Devil Youth Football and Cheer Corp. for an approval of Resolution 2023-12, recognizing them as a nonprofit organization operating within the city. Uh, late last week, uh, we received an email and a phone call from Colby down at uh, North Star Bank, uh, who is also a member of the, of the Richmond Football Organization, uh, saying that they were doing a raffle. Uh, they'll be raffling off um, a golf cart among other prizes, I believe. Uh, and that they were uh, going to be uh, announcing the winner, I believe, on November 4th. Uh, we've done similar resolutions for other kind of parent-run nonprofit organizations operating in the city through the years.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 2023-12, which recognizes the Richmond Blue Devils Youth Football and Cheer Corp. as a nonprofit organization operating in the city of Richmond for the purpose of obtaining a charitable gaming licenses.
Support.
What's been made and supported? Any discussion on this item? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Mr. Leans, matters from the city manager, sir?
Uh, just wanted to let uh, everyone know the uh, bike rack uh, that was shown in the plans of the parking lot up on uh, Forest Street was installed today. Uh, I believe along with the striping and the landscaping, uh, we're pretty much done with the project as far as the contractor was um, concerned. Uh, we do on Wednesday's TIF agenda have the DTE lighting contract. We have all the conduit and everything that the contractor was supposed to install. Uh, and at Wednesday's TIF meeting, we'll be approving the lighting contract.
Very good. Moving on to uh, council comments. Jim?
Nothing, Mayor.
Emily?
Nothing, thank you.
John?
Nothing tonight.
Rob?
All set.
Dennis?
Nothing tonight.
I'm all set, thank you.
Okay. Well, I just want to wish uh, Pastor Mark Haller from um, St. Peter's Church and School a happy 25th anniversary of his ordination, ordination. Council had uh, done a resolution for him and, and I went down and, and uh, gave that to him. It was uh, Pastor Doro, who we all know, uh, ran the uh, the uh, church service along with the, the celebration of his 25th anniversary. And it was a lot of fun. Uh, and it was a, a great time to see a lot of people, uh, that I haven't seen in quite a while. But uh, it was interesting. The state also uh, uh, recognized him and as did McComb County, uh, Board of Commissioners. Don Brown was also there. So uh, between the three of us, we uh, I should say, I made a joke that it took us almost as long as it took to have the sermon from Pastor Doro and got quite a chuckle out of the whole place. I didn't know he was known for his, his lengthy sermons. I did not know that. So I evidently got him good. So he's, he's always fun to, to be around. Uh, Pastor Doro is uh, an iconic person in our community as far as I'm concerned. But again, uh, happy uh, 25th anniversary to Pastor Haller. Uh, we also had the uh, uh, golf cart, uh, the RPOA uh, thing on the 6th, um, which uh, you know, did well. I hope maybe we can do even better next year. We've got a lot of golf carts registered just in this town alone. And um, we need to see uh, some more support out there. So that will probably be again, the uh, I think it's the first Saturday of August, I think is when they do it. Is that what it is?
Sunday.
Is it? Uh, this is Mark Drangman, right?
No, you're right. It's on Sunday.
Or Sunday, I'm sorry, Sunday. Yeah, the first Sunday in August. So put it on your calendars. We, they need our support and it's for a good cause. So um, that, we have just one thing this evening from uh, the city police department. Uh, it is a free to the public community shred day, which will be held August 26th, today being the 21st. So it's uh, this coming Saturday, the 26th, from noon to 3 o'clock. And you just bring your items in here to the city hall police department building and uh, it's a good way of disposing any of your old and unneeded financial or personal records. Is there anything else that we need to add to the calendar at the moment?
I'd just add to that shred day that when you pull in, uh, just turn to the right and stay to the right. You'll end up in the back big area of the parking lot. The person is there with the big huge uh, truck and it, it's really kind of a massive, kind of almost wood chipper type operation. They also help you with your boxes and
Oh, okay.
And so you just pull up, you don't even unload them and take them anywhere. They, they go right from your car into the, into a bin that then is dumped into this chipper. So it's very, very efficient and, and you're, you just really drive through.
Good, good. Very good.
Yeah.
Okay, we move on. Uh, is there any other business for the city council this evening? Be you not, a motion to adjourn would be in order.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Support.
What's been made and supported? There is no discussion on the adjournment motion. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Thank you very much for being with us this evening.